Pittsburgh Common Council Meeting for May 23, 2023. The first order is to call the order to the meeting. The time is 7:31. Second is please stand up for the place of allegiance. So next is roll call, please.
Alder Allen.
Present.
Mayor Ratafratta.
Here.
Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Here.
Alder Jetzer.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Strassmann.
Here.
Alder Udell.
Here.
Alder Wheeler is absent with excuse. Do you have a call, Mayor?
Thank you very much. So next in our agenda is public appearances for non-agenda items and new appointments. Do we don't have anyone on the chamber? No? Online? No? So then we move to...
Mr. President?
Yes. Who? I think she's coming from the proclamation. Okay. So we are going to read a proclamation that Alder Maldonado and Alder Gerhart moved forward in order to recognize May as a mental health awareness month. So whereas May first marks the beginning of mental health awareness month, which has been observed in the United States since 1949, and encourage everyone to be aware of their mental well-being and...
Whereas nationally, an estimated 49.5% of adolescents have had a mental health disorder at some point in their life, but only 20% of youth with mental, emotional, or behavioral disorders receive mental health care, and...
Whereas students from Wisconsin face high levels of anxiety, which 52% of Wisconsin students self-reporting significant problem with anxiety, and 33% of Wisconsin students reporting feeling sad or hopeless every day, an increase of 5.2% in 2019, and...
Whereas the mental health crisis disproportionately affects students of color and LGBTQ+ students in the three school districts included in the city of Pittsburgh, with multicultural and BIPOC students experiencing the highest proportion of poor mental health outcomes among racial categories, and LGBTQ+ youth experiencing the highest levels of poor mental health outcomes among groups of youth, and...
Whereas nearly one in five adults in the United States live with a mental illness and face the realities of managing a mental illness every day, and...
Whereas in his State of the State speech, Governor Evers declared 2023 as the Year of Mental Health, marking the state government's investment in ensuring all Wisconsinites have access to mental health services, and...
Whereas mental health impacts a person's emotional, social, environmental, financial, and overall well-being with significant disparity among racially and ethnically diverse and LGBTQ+ communities, and...
Whereas greater public awareness about mental illness can change negative attitudes and behaviors toward people with mental illnesses, and creating a community where everyone feels comfortable reaching out for the support they deserve is crucial to ending the stigma around mental health, and...
Whereas the Dane County Board of Supervisor passed a resolution RS-044 in support of the youth's mental health access and recognizing May as a Mental Health Awareness Month, and...
Whereas organizations throughout the community such as NAMI, Dane County, RISE, and Anesis Therapy are dedicated to providing and investing in the necessary resources to improve the mental health outcomes of all residents.
Now, therefore, it is resolved that I, the Mayor Julio Ratafratta, and the City of Pittsburgh Common Council commit to addressing the youth's mental health crisis, investing in mental health resources, and recognize May as a Mental Health Awareness Month, proclaim this May 2023. So we have some people in the public that they want to speak about this. So the first one is... Eli Saroski.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Alder Maldonado, for the invitation to speak today to acknowledge May as Mental Health Awareness Month. It is an honor to be here today. I'm grateful for this opportunity. Mental health is a topic that I care deeply about. I've experienced the highs and lows. I have been there for friends who struggled, find the will to live. In the mayor's proclamation, she highlights the heavy burden of poor mental health outcomes my younger generation carries. I want to use this speech today to humanize the outcomes we are seeing and talk about the importance of us showing up for each other by spreading love and supporting each other in community. So for my speech, I'm to find community as family and friends that I've been grateful to be around. And I do recognize that community is defined differently for different people. But today, I'd like to just touch on some lessons and learnings from my community. So growing up in Pittsburgh, I went to Leopold Elementary School, Cherokee Middle School, and West High School. I've enjoyed many great memories with my friends for playing on the jungle gyms at Leopold and volunteering at the Pittsburgh Library to get lunch at the Regions Free Co-op and mentoring kids through MSCR at Leopold. Being around my friends early on taught me how the importance of kindness and showing up for a community with love goes a long way. It showed me that living a thriving life meant that the adults around you needed to show up for you, and I was fortunate to grow up in a family and a community of adults around me that supported me and have shown me the values of treating others with respect and loving each other for our different backgrounds and identities. Fast forward to today, and I've had the privilege to carry these values into my work in mental health. Through my work, I've had the privilege to begin the opportunity to conduct research on teen mental health in Dane County this past spring and being a part of the Pittsburgh Teen Center Engagement Study. So I'm going to share some data and to give some context to it. Again, this might be... Some of these data might be hard for people to hear because of people might have previous experiences with different mental health outcomes like suicide, self-harm. That might be hard to hear. But in my research on youth mental health in Dane County, I've learned from the 2021 Dane County Youth Assessment that about 5,500 high school youth reported experiencing anxiety, about 3,600 youth reported experiencing depression, and about 3,600 high school youth reported experiencing suicidal ideation, about 3,000 high school youth reported experiencing non-suicidal self-harm, and about 700 youth reported suicide attempts. These numbers represent the experience of youth in the community that we define as Dane County. And I want to pause here and just acknowledge that these numbers represent youth in our community who are struggling and finding ways to carry on. These numbers also represent youth who are courageous enough to fill out surveys and hope that people could hear their call for love, support, and action. And I hear them, and I'm grateful for them sharing these experiences. And I also know that feeling of losing friends by suicide, this is an experience that does not only affect a small community, it affects all of us. I know that acknowledging the tragedies of using young people in our communities is difficult, but it is necessary. I do my best to find hope in the pain. The young people of our community give me hope. In the Pittsburgh Teen Center Engagement Study in the past August, youth identified mental health as the top three priority in their surveys. They valued making sure their friends and other youth were able to live a life where they were supported and loved. The youth re-taught me the importance of supporting each other as they described their experience of supporting friends and doing their best to get by school. And this was youth coming right out of the pandemic, so you can imagine. Like, they were like, we were on computers. Like, I don't even know what Zoom was initially and stuff. It was impressive, and I really gave the youth a lot of credit. The youth taught me about the importance of caring for their community and caring for each other, and that's something that just reinforced why I was so excited to be a part of the work. And I'm just encouraged again, seeing mental health becoming a more easy topic to talk about, although it is difficult still. And also just very encouraged by the care that I see in our community from people, whether that be people on this council, whether that be our teachers, whether that be physicians. It's just very like, the community is out there, and the community cares. And so I hope you all to continue to choose love and support our youth and each other. It takes all of us to care for our community, and I'm grateful to be a part of that. I'm grateful for this opportunity again to speak here. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Eli. Thank you very much. So remember that we didn't establish at the beginning, we had three minutes to speak up. So, okay, who is next? Okay, Sean.
Great, thank you so much, Mayor, and the entire council and the entire public here. I probably won't take a full three minutes here, but I just wanted to really... I'm speaking, I would say, in my role as the Healthy Kids Collaborative's Healthy Schools Coordinator, and we're a part of the Office of Population Health at UW Health. Some of you may know that UW Health and the other health systems here in Dane County, each, every three years, work on a Community Health Needs Assessment, where we study and study the different clinical trends, connect with community members, and ultimately decide on priority areas based on need. And not surprisingly, for all the reasons listed in the proclamation and for many of the reasons that Eli was sharing, you will not be surprised that mental health is one of the four priority areas that all of the health systems are focusing on to address. The health system, the school systems, the justice systems, you know, they care for these individuals that are going through mental health crises every day. And I guess I'm here to talk a little bit about upstream solutions and protective factors, because that really, I would say, as a municipality, as a city, that's really where a big part of the role is for you all. Investing in certain social services, sure. Directly health-related services, yes, of course, that's important. But things like, you know, investing in spaces for people to gather, planning events for people to connect with one another, hiring good people into positions that are caring and loving, these are all what I would call upstream solutions and protective factors to making sure that people feel welcome, included, seen, so that they are adjusting well to maybe a new transition in their life because they've moved from another city to Pittsburgh. Maybe they've had a big life event, and they're a little bit more at risk. Sometimes those spaces to connect with another person like you, sometimes being able to go to a park and be physically active, those are the types of things that can really help holistic health and prevent mental health crises, as I'm sure many of you know. So I'm just here to really celebrate the commitments made and encourage further investment by the city of Pittsburgh in programs, in services, in spaces that really support mental health, but you're not calling them, oh, this is a mental health program. So a couple of the investments that come to mind right off the bat are the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative, the Neighborhood Hub, the Teen Center. These are all projects that ultimately, I would say, are mental health projects. They're mental health investments in our community. So I just want to, again, celebrate the commitments made and encourage further investment in the spaces, in the places, events, and experiences that really help folks support one another and build resiliency and allow each other to be seen. Thank you so much, and keep up the good work.
Thank you. So next? Kristen, yes, go ahead.
This social matter is something that hits home for so many living in our communities. I come from a family that has generationally lived with mental health diagnoses, including myself in our household. I have lived with anxiety and a panic disorder since my preschool years and depression since adolescence, including postpartum depression after each of my pregnancies. The experience of my family and I are not unique. There are so many other families and individuals in our communities who have similar stories to share. During the pandemic and beyond, we have seen a rise in the number of people experiencing anxiety, depression, other mental health conditions, and suicide, with the steepest rise among our youth. Declaring May Mental Health Awareness Month means ending the stigma and diagnosis and treatment. It means building a more accessible, robust, treatment-and-service-diverse system. It also means addressing inequalities that lead to higher rates of mental health struggles for people that experience racism, classism, sexism, ableism, hate, and bigotry because of their sexual orientation, gender identity, and their things like religious choice. If anyone is interested in learning about how they can support those in their families or communities that may be struggling right now, there are mental health first aid classes and trainings offered by various organizations, including the UW's We Rose Program. I also suggest getting familiar with and reaching out to the services available in your community and those offered by the Dane County's Human Services Department. There is also the new 988 and the new suicide prevention line available to those in mental health crisis. I want to thank our governor for making 2023 the Year of Mental Health for Wisconsin. I also want to thank the Pittsburgh Common Council for passing this special matter, ending the stigma, and join me and my colleagues on the Dane County Board in committing to making care a priority in our communities and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. So we need to take the picture now? Yeah, wait. I don't know. If you want to come to take the picture, everyone is invited.
Okay, everybody smile. Here we go. One, two, three, and again. And it's my burst mode, and we're done.
Okay, so next we move to the consent agenda. So I need a motion.
Second.
All those... Any comment? Anyone wants to move any of the resolution to another committee? Anything like that? No? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. So next, we are moving to the Administrator Report.
Good evening, everyone. A few announcements for you all. The Police Department will be holding one of their regular community meetings on May 25th, this Thursday, at 5:30 PM. The meeting will be held in the Southdale Neighborhood at the Doxa Church located at 2,700 Novation Parkway. The weather is cooperating quite nicely, and therefore, the splash pad will be opening on May 30th. It is also EMS Appreciation Week, so we want to thank our EMS providers at Fitrona EMS for their service to our community. The next Pittsburgh Faith Leaders Meeting will be June 6th at 8:00 AM at Fire Station Number One. And finally, for your save the date, the Pittsburgh Festival of Speed will be held right down here on Cheryl Parkway near the Agora Pavilion on July 8th. And as we have done in the last several years, there will be obviously the bike event and racing that will take place, music, free live music, and then the fireworks will be following most of the events at dusk. So I have any questions?
Nope. Okay. Thank you, Chad.
Madam Mayor, I would move to amend the agenda to take up Items 10(c), Open Discussion on Burning Policy, Discussion Only with No Action to Be Taken.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor of moving the... Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. So where are you going to move it, Jay?
Right now.
Right now? We are not going to discuss the resolution, Item 7b1, before?
No, I was going to just take it right now.
Okay.
So Evan, did you... You filled out a slip and gave it to the mayor? Okay. Why don't you come up here? So this discussion is being generated by an email that everybody got from Kathy Crook. And she lives on... What street does she live on? She lives on Timber Ridge. What happened is on Woods Edge Way, there was a... There was a prescribed burn of a prairie restoration that the residents trying to do. And Mrs. Crook and her husband came home and found smoke everywhere and were freaked out a little bit about that. And so they sent a letter to the council. This prompted me to start looking into our procedures for these things, and I believe the fire chief is online also because I've had a couple of discussions with him about this. So initially, when I heard this was going on, my thought was, well, we shouldn't be burning anything. We shouldn't be doing burning in the middle of residential neighborhoods. But then, as I further looked into this, it turns out if you're doing a prairie restoration, you kind of have to do burning. It's not really optional. It's something that you just simply have to do. So this ordinance that they have up on the screen now is what our ordinance currently is regarding this kinds of... These kinds of things. And it doesn't go down far enough, but specifically under... Well, 7058 is there. 7058 says, "Except as provided in this division, no person within the city shall set any fire or blast on any land, burn in a dump, or engage in any open burning without a... Within any residential subdivision or commercial district or within 100 feet of a boundary of a residential subdivision or a commercial district." This is obviously language that's left over from the township days because we didn't really talk about residential subdivisions. We talked about now, about the urban service area. So that needs to be updated. It also references the urban service area created under Chapter 15, but that chapter doesn't exist in our ordinances anymore because our ordinances were re-codified in 2009, and that didn't get updated. And I'm not... I didn't have a chance to figure out exactly what that should be pointing to, but Chapter 15 is the wrong thing. So it then goes on to say, "There's exceptions for certain fires." And it says, "The setting of fires shall be allowed in any of the following situations. One, where a fire is set for the sole purpose of warming persons or cooking food." So that would be like, you know, you're having your little backyard with a fire ring and that kind of thing. Then number two is where rubbish is burned in a barrel trash can or other closed burner, and a heavy wire screen or cover is used to prevent material or embers from blowing out. Now, that one, that one is clearly a township thing. I don't think we really want people putting barrels in their backyards and having fires, even if they have a screen over it. So that's a section that I think should probably be removed. And then the last one is where a written permit has been obtained from the City of Pittsburgh Fire Department. So Joe, you're on the line, right?
I am.
Can you just run through how getting a burn permit works or a burn plan? How does that work in the city right now?
Sure. So first of all, you're absolutely correct in the fact that we don't allow open burning in the urban service area without written permission from the fire chief or the city fire department. So in this situation, let's say the burning of leaves or brush would be prohibited, and we would not issue a burn plan for that. What we did offer is a... We offered a burn plan to a prairie restoration company to conduct what was ultimately a prairie restoration fire. The reason we allowed that is we do allow the city to conduct prairie restoration fires on our municipal property. And because of the fact that there is a risk reduction model followed by these companies that conduct the prairie restoration fires, these prescribed fires, we have allowed it. That... What comes with that is at least two people conducting the fire. They're trained not only in lighting the fire and conducting the prescribed burn, but also in extinguishment by the DNR. They also carry with them an insurance policy in the event that the fire gets out of hand. So there's a risk reduction model there. And the other thing that we took into consideration is the reason why the city does prescribe burns, and that's to control invasive species without using chemicals. So there were a number of reasons that went into it. We don't let anybody do these. It's done through a company that has been proven to be able to handle the types of fires that they're lighting and to be able to control the situation with minimal environmental or ecological impact. So that's the long and short of it. They would call into the fire department. They submit a burn plan so they would know exactly what they're burning, and then the methods that they're going to use to include how many people they're going to have on property. And then we issued the burn permit associated with that specific burn.
I invited Evan from Good Oak. They were the company that actually did the fire that generated the complaint. And Evan, if you could just run through why these fires are done and what precautions you take to make sure they don't hit out of hand?
Most definitely. So the fire chief really hit home a lot of really good points there. So looking back thousands of years, all the natural communities in the southern part of Wisconsin were fire-dominated communities, either from wildfires that occurred naturally or more so fires that were lit by the indigenous people that lived here to manage the land and to manage the plants in the communities that result from that. So fast forward to today, and we have an onslaught of invasive species, species that have come over from Europe or Asia or South America, species brought on by excessive human movement that weren't here thousands of years ago. And those plants really outcompete our native plants, which are so vitally important for our local pollinators, which are kind of the base of our food chain. We hear in so many news articles and news stories about our declining pollinator populations and what we can do to help. And prescribed fire is one of those things. It's reintroducing something that happened with these plants that they co-evolved with for thousands of years to help make homes for these pollinators that they otherwise wouldn't have. Most of us have heard of these larger prairie restoration fires on, you know, tens or hundreds of acres in the country outside of city limits. Even some of your larger city of Pittsburgh natural areas and parks or prescribed fire is conducted. But even on a small scale, so this burn in question was maybe about a third the size of this room. So very, very small-scale fire. But in that neighborhood, there's not much for native plants. You drive around and you look in people's yards, and it's vast expanses of lawn or dandelions or things that aren't super beneficial to our native pollinators. So we're trying to create these small urban sanctuaries for wildlife and pollinators, and using prescribed fire is ultimately a part of that, to both encourage our native plants and control our invasive species. And as the fire chief mentioned, it's a great method to reduce herbicide use. As an ecological restoration company, we do use herbicide to control invasive plants, but if we can use natural mechanisms such as fire, that's less impactful on the ground and the surrounding community. Fire obviously does create some disturbance and concern to surrounding properties, which we have gathered here to talk about more or less, and what happens with that smoke that we produce. So when we're looking at doing fires, we're looking for lighter winds. We're looking for that smoke to rise up instead of lay over the ground and disperse that way. I looked a little bit at the weather the day of this burn in particular, and winds were between 5 and 10 miles an hour, which is pretty light in regards to prescribed fire. And we had about the most optimal smoke dispersal conditions we could have asked for, given the day. So what Jay and I have discussed a little bit is City of Madison ordinance in that they require neighbor notifications within, I believe, it's 200 or 300 feet around... that they require neighbor notifications within, I believe it's two or 300 feet around the surrounding property. And looking back at hindsight, definitely something as we burn in more of these small urban areas is something that we need to look into as a company. And even if it isn't required by the municipality, but I would urge that to be, to be written into whatever ordinance is, is decided upon.
So if I, if I may interrupt here, that is one consideration that, that we have already discussed, because that's one thing that I can totally relate to the, the concerned residents. I mean, if you leave a window open and, and you're not aware of the fire, that is going to have smoke infiltration and that can be a nuisance. So we, we do want to make sure that that notification piece is enforced and we'll, we'll make sure that that is something that we would request to propose to be inside the ordinance.
Definitely. Yeah. And in, in finding out what that, that buffer is, be it 200 feet or 300 feet, I know there's...
Madison's requires 200 feet.
Okay, definitely. And I, I'm not sure exactly how far away this property was that there was a complaint from in relation to the address that we were at. I don't know if you had a chance to look up?
Yeah, she's, she's in an adjoining property, so it's like zero feet.
Yep, yeah, definitely. Yeah. And day of, we knock, we, we knock on all the neighbors surrounding the property. And if they're home, great, but if not, then obviously there's not a whole lot we can do. And that would have been, I, I talked to my crew that was on the burn that day and they said, yeah, there was one property that nobody answered the door. And I'm gonna guess.
Yeah. So I guess what I wanted to do, because I, this, this ordinance that we have need, is in need of updating and rewriting and making it look like we're actually a city. So what I wanted to get from the council is what is your sense about how you want to handle these things? What should be included, what should be removed? I mean, my, my initial thought upon looking at our ordinance is that this idea of burning rubbish in a barrel, that just needs to go away. That, that should not be permitted at all, in my view.
Alder Allen, if, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Sorry, I thought you paused. So if I may make a recommendation that we, we draft something for you to bring back to another council meeting, just so that we're not potentially stepping over anything?
That's, that's, that's the thought here. I just wanted to get input from the council before drafting that so that the efforts aren't in vain here.
No, I get it.
Yeah.
Just wanted to offer that to you.
My only comment, you know, I think we treat the urban service territory different than the outside. You know, I'm, I'm very, I don't like telling people who live all in the country how they have to live their lives. That's, that's not my business.
Yeah, and I think that's fair to differentiate between the urban service area and the rural areas.
Oh, Randy.
Yeah, I, I think the notification is, is definitely an important part that should be added. I live in this area and I did receive a, a number of comments from residents in much further way than adjacent property. So I'm not sure how far out you reached, but not to say that you didn't, but they were not aware of the burn. They thought it was somebody burning wet leaves. And, but they did mention that the smoke was, in their minds, was pretty heavy. So I'm not sure if just knocking on the door, maybe a, a, a notifier a day or two in advance.
Yeah, yeah, most definitely, if I, if I might jump in here. And, and I think it, you know, City of Madison, we typically mail out notifications in February via US Postal Service.
Yes.
And in that, in that notification, we'll usually put one of, whoever the burn boss on the burn is, will put their email in on it and say, if you receive this letter, there's going to be a, a burn conducted at this address. And if you do want day of notification or day before notification, please send us back your, your phone number, your email address. Because some folks, they're like, yeah, we don't, we don't care, do what, do what you want. I mean, that's, that's your property, that's that property. But we're happy to develop listservs for each individual address. And that's something that really came to light this year. We've, we really started doing a lot of these smaller urban burns this year. A lot of people kind of noticed their yards during COVID and they're all getting to a point that they are at a burnable stage, so.
Yeah. We may also want to include the alder or alders of that particular district.
Yeah.
It just, I mean, we, we receive notifications for other.
Yep.
Sure.
Yeah, that would, I would be completely on board with that.
Construction and so forth. So I think, I think that would help diffuse some of the issues that come from.
Yeah, most definitely. So you're not, you're not blindsided either when, when something does arise.
Yeah.
And just for everybody's consideration, just making sure we're aware that this is very condition dependent, which is why a lot of these things move pretty quickly once they've determined that the burn conditions are right, specifically wind and moisture. So I, I do like the idea of, of notification in advance.
Yeah, I think it seems like what we probably need to do is send, we had, we need to have the letters sent out.
Yep.
And maybe do that two or three weeks before.
Yep.
Because you never know which day is going to be the day.
Yep.
And if you wait until you do and you try to mail something, it's not going to get there in time. But I like, I do like the idea of an email notification. Do, are there any other thoughts on this? Because I want to start redrafting this and get it fixed. Because right now what we have is, it's not a good ordinance for the city. And I think that, you know, we're the policymaking body, not the fire department, so we need to set a policy here and, and, you know, send the fire department to execute it. Because otherwise they get caught in the crosshairs and that's not fair to them.
I, I have a question. So you are going to draft the ordinance or you are going to work with the staff to do it?
Well, I mean, I'll work with staff to get, to get stuff done.
Okay, and you're going to work with Joe?
Well, with Joe and with Valerie.
Okay. Okay. Gabriela?
One question though, is in terms of notification, we require a certain level of letters, emails, or knocking on doors, or whatever that is. Is that at the, on the, at the onus of the person, of the company that's doing the burn? Or is it at the city's? It's not the city, right? The company?
It's on the contractor, yep. Yeah. Everything I've, everything I've ever experienced is on the contractor. It's not adding, adding work to the fire department. They, they review that burn plan and then they give us the, the okay. That's as much as work goes on, on the city level.
Great. And that's a typical thing that you see in other?
Yeah, yep, definitely. It, it all falls to the contractor to, to do that.
Great.
Definitely.
Any other comment?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if the impact of the burn can be minimized by doing a mowing and a raking beforehand and just burn the remnants?
Yeah, it, it really depends what, what your, your target results are for that fire. If it's woody plant reduction, you'd, you obviously want a little, little bit more of an intense fire if you're trying to control some of our invasive species such as buckthorn or honeysuckle. This fire in particular was oak leaf litter. So it was an oak, it's an oak woodland. So the fuel was about as minimized as it, as it possibly could have been without compromising the integrity of the fire and the ability for the fire to carry. So typically, I, I wouldn't say fuel loading and how much there is, is a, is a super indicative of how smoky things are going to be. It's really how much moisture is in that fuel, what your wind conditions are, what your lift conditions are. Yeah.
And one of my, one of my concerns with, with raking is it sort of sets up this, this perception that we allow people to rake things into piles and to burn them. And that's, that's exactly what this is not. Raking things into piles creates a bigger problem for us.
Okay, Bill?
My intention was mow it, rake it, haul it away, burn the remaining area. So I'm, I'm suggesting burning less of the fuel.
Yeah. From a, from a contractor's perspective, it's not, you know, it's not super economical. And also by removing some, that fuel, a lot of our, our seeds are in that fuel, you know, the, the plants that are going to repopulate after the burn and things like that. So by removing those before we burn, we may be removing the future generations of plants going on in that prairie or woodland or whichever natural community you may be burning. So not super feasible from, from my perspective, but...
Alder Allen, I'd be happy to work with the fire chief and the city attorney based on the discussion that's been had, if, if you're comfortable with that and bring...
Well, I'll work with you.
And just from my notes, just so that we know what to, to look to include in a forthcoming draft, would be looking to include a notification requirement, sounds like 200 feet is kind of what may be something that the council's interested in, looking at notification requirements.
We might want to go with, we might want to go with 300 feet. That's what we require, what we require for, is, what is it that we require that for?
Usually for neighborhood notification.
Sound permits, sound permits.
And then obviously looking at letters in advance, going out to affected areas within that 300-foot notification area, public safety organizations and alders being included in notification. And then it sounds as though we may want to have, council may want to consider removing or at least prohibiting rubbish burning within the urban service area and leaving that as an allowable activity outside the urban service area. Is there any desire to have any other specifications within the ordinance, i.e. a burn plan needs to be submitted to the fire chief or anything along those lines?
Well, that's, yeah, that should be specified in the ordinance. It's not right now. It's specified by fire department policy, but it's not specified in our ordinance. So I think that would be a good thing. The other thing that, so the City of Madison actually has a permit application for this very thing. And I think we could probably largely steal that application. They do require a $50 fee because there's administrative work that's involved, but I didn't, you know, when you're spending as much money as it costs to do this, I don't think that's really going to be a hardship. But I, in looking through, Madison's fire ordinance is really extensive and I don't want to just copy their ordinance, but I think this application is good.
Shannon has a question.
Actually, I have a question for the chief. How many people you think would say a year burn rubbish where we'd have to put that in the ordinance? Is that an issue?
So typically in the, the urban service, well, we don't like burning rubbish to begin with. It's all natural combustibles. So from a rubbish standpoint, we wouldn't allow a rubbish fire. In the urban service area, if you're talking about that being common combustibles, brush, foliage, that type of thing, outside of the urban service area, we would, we would allow that within reason. And we'd have to take into consideration where they're conducting that fire in respect to outbuildings and so forth. But rubbish, we wouldn't allow.
I think the issue right now...
I was just, I, I just wanted to know, do you get a lot of calls on that? On, in, you know, in a year? Because if we don't get any calls in there and it's already kind of in this urban service area that we're not allowed to do it, I, I just don't see the point of putting it in an ordinance if we don't need it.
Yeah, I think we need to specify that rubbish isn't allowed so that we have the ability to enforce it. We do get called on occasion for outside fires. Sometimes people put rubbish in there, I would guess. And I'm, I'm out of the station right now, so I can't run that report for you. I can get it for you. Maybe a couple of times a year to the point where it's truly rubbish and it shouldn't have been burned. And then we're forced to either have them extinguish or we extinguish the fire.
Jay?
Yeah, the problem right now, and you can see it there on section 7059, number two, it's, it specifically says you can burn rubbish. So I just want to remove that section to, as a starting point. Because, you know, while the chief says they don't allow it, our ordinance says we do.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a problem.
Here's what I...
That's one of the problems in this ordinance.
Here's what I appreciate what you're doing right now. For a long time, the, the ordinance has, has been a hot topic item that depending on where you, like where you grew up or where your house is or how long you've lived in the city, that has a tendency of being something that people like to talk about. And it was in the ordinance that it could be done. I, I'm more than happy to remove that element of the, or recommend removal of that element of the, the burn regulation with your approval.
Yeah, the, the other thing that I was looking at is, and so, so the Pittsburgh Fire Department webpage has different things on it than what's in our ordinance. For example, it says where there is a fire for the sole purpose of warming persons or cooking food. And that's fine, but that should be in a, in a fire pit of some sort. It shouldn't just be, you know, in the middle of the backyard. And the, the fire department website says that as long as it's in a commercially made fire pit or outdoor fireplace, but that should be in our ordinance. That shouldn't be a fire department policy that they made. That should be something that we've determined is important enough to go in our ordinance. And the, the other, you know, the other thing that was very confusing is that the fire department website says that open burning can only be conducted outside of the urban service area, but yet we allow it within the urban service area. So there's some things that need, we just need some consistency. And that was what really disturbed me as I was reading through all this, is that we've got contradictory information, we have stuff that doesn't make any sense. So I guess, I don't have to, I don't really have anything else to add to this, but thanks for your input. And I think we can get, we can start working on a draft ordinance revision for this because it's absolutely necessary.
I just want to clarify on the trash, the rubbish. Urban service area, where's prohibition or citywide prohibition?
No, I, I think burning in a barrel in the urban service area should not be permitted.
Just want to make sure we work on, we're on the same page.
Okay.
Okay.
I would, I would say, I would say citywide because I think we're dealing with a DNR issue and we would like to help our residents avoid any potential issues with burning rubbish.
Okay, so citywide?
We'll look at, we'll look at the associated issues and, and bring things forward. How's that sound?
Can you share the Madison ordinance with?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, I'll forward it on to everybody.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other question about this topic, comment? Nope? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Joe. So we have some work, homework to do, okay? Thank you. Okay, so next we are coming back to our agenda. So we are going to discuss commission and committee reports. We start with plan commission.
The only thing to report from the plan commission meeting from May 16th is that there was a, a plan commission orientation since there's a couple of new members. And Zach went through kind of the purview of the, of the plan commission and the different types of things that we look to and the things that are only plan commission, things that go back to council. So if anyone's interested in digging into that a little bit more, I can pull the link to that video and send it out to the council. Feel free to watch that. He'll be probably following up later to talk specifically about smart code because he didn't dig into it at that, at that meeting. That's all.
Thank you. So next we move to Board of Public Works. So David?
I move approval resolution R, or I move, I move we postpone, nope.
No, that one is...
No, next one. I move approval resolution R 123, conditionally approving the holding tank permit for 2995 South Sine Road.
Second.
Oh, okay, so this one was amended by Public Works, so can you explain that?
So it was amended by Public Works. We, we put in a provision that it, it had to be reapplied for after five years.
Okay.
And this, that came from, Mr. David Hath came and he, he wanted it three years and we, we thought five years was more appropriate.
Okay, I have a question. So this person is for what?
He's for this line, this item.
Okay, so we have here Joe Gerbasi. He is here to, he was to answer any question if needed, so. Okay, any other comment? Can you explain what is this?
Well, you know, the, the site is not, the site is not appropriate for mound, the soils and various things. They have a holding tank, but you're putting in a larger one. Am I, am I correct? am I correct?
Can you come? Can you, can you repeat your name and your address, please?
I'm sorry.
Can you repeat your name and your address? Your name?
It's Joe Gervasi. And I have one holding tank in one of my business buildings now. And Jay Allen is familiar with my corner. Before COVID, I was in here in front of the planning committee and everything, and we've been wanting to put a little restaurant bar on that corner for years. We had it approved, both the council and whoever was, you know, Jay, you got to remember that, don't you? We went through all of it, and nobody had any problems with what I wanted to do. And when we left here, they pretty much approved what we wanted to do for the corner. Now I spent a bunch of money on that corner, and I was told a couple of years ago by Tracy that Pittsburgh is never going to bring me sewer or water, because it's too low. So I was gonna hook up to the Metropolitan Sewer District, and we had that all planned with the drawings and all this stuff, and when I contacted the people, because the Metropolitan Sewer District approved it, and the, you know, the county did. So we were gonna put it in, and the company that was gonna do it went through, talked to Tracy, and Tracy told them, no, if you're gonna hook up to the Metropolitan Sewer District, you're gonna have to hook up to Pittsburgh's water. Well, there's no way I can spend that kind of money to go one way to the sewer district and then another way to try to get to Pittsburgh's water. Now I've talked to her recently, and she said, well, probably in 24, 2024, when they redo South Sine Road, you'll probably be bringing water down to you. So what I've been trying to do now, because I don't know if, when they do that road, if they're gonna bring sewer and water, or what their intentions are. So what I'm trying to do right now, with the amount of money I spent on that property and cleaning that corner up, is to get a temporary holding tank in there so I can go ahead with my plans. And if they do bring it down, I'll hook up to it. Right now, I've got a bond with my insurance company. I've got a contract with DeVorick Pumping. For all these years, we've not won a problem. And I don't know why it's a problem for Pittsburgh if I got the same bond and the same company hauling it, and I'm paying for my own waste to get haul out of there. And the neighborhood wants it, and I'm just trying to see if we can work it out. We're, you know, it's gonna cost me close to 20 grand for a holding tank, and in a year and a half or two years, you might bring sewer down through. So, with water. So I don't, just asking you to work with me and let me put a tank in. And the problem I got with some of the stipulations on that was if I put the tank in, I can't do anything to increase my business, to generate any more waste. Well, I cannot, you know, there's no reason for me to put a tank in if I can't make more money.
Well, I have.
Okay, you have a question?
Yeah, I think it's unlikely that the city's gonna bring sewer down. We would bring water down because with the improvement of the road, there'd be fire hydrants that would be installed. But your property is basically the last property, and the, the cost of bringing sewer down there would just be, I mean, I think you're low enough that it would probably require a lift station just for your house.
Well, years ago, when we had started this year, and I was gonna hook up to Metropolitan, I've already bought the grinder pumps and everything to send it that way.
Ah, I see.
So I've already spent thousands of dollars in, with the stuff just sitting there.
Any other question? Bill?
Just a point of clarification. As I'm reading through the documentation here, the supporting documentation within the packet, it says that your existing system has failed, and it implies this is a replacement for a failed system. But that doesn't sound like what we're describing here.
That's not correct at all. I have a holding tank for that business, and the building that I, in right now, where it's been there for years and years and years. And at one point, it did have bathroom and shower and everything in it when Joel Rend owned it. He built it and lived there with his mom. And he had a septic system that went towards Sine Road that we've taken out years ago, you know. So it hasn't been, you know, there's nothing there. But the building actually at one time had sewer and water in it, you know, the, the septic system.
David, can you explain what you're discussing public works about?
We discussed, you know, the, that, now I, that is, we felt a, a tank is the only option there, because the soil studies show you couldn't put in a mound.
No, we, no, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we already had that checked, and they won't let me do that. I don't have.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, right. I don't have room for it.
Yeah, the, a tank is, tank is the option. There's a few other sites in the city where they have temporary, you know, we've given them a, a permit to have a, a holding tank. So it's, I think there's only two other ones besides this, and we, we don't, we don't see this as being any, any big accommodation, you know. We think allowing him to use his property, which is over four. I, Bill, I, I was under the same impression, too, that that was failing, and this was a replacement. So that I, that I, I was mistaken on that.
Okay, any other comment? Jay?
Size is your current tank?
The tank I have in the one building's 2,000 gallon, and the one that he talked about putting in, this building in the front, it's gonna be 5,000.
And how, how often do you have to have that 2,000 gallon tank pumped out?
About every month and a half.
Any other question? Chad?
So I think it's important for the council to, to be aware that this holding tank permit, as stated now, has a number of conditions related to it, that the land may not be subdivided, a CSM, rezoned, nor may any conditional use permits be granted unless this approval, if it's approved, if it goes through, is abandoned. A conditional use permit is required to operate a restaurant or a tavern anywhere in the city.
That's correct.
And it's my understanding, and I don't have the exact dates on this, this whole information, that there was potentially a desire to open a tavern and restaurant as tied to this, was new information shared with me late last week, and some research that our planning department had done. Apparently, it was perhaps as, as far ago as the late 80s, that this was originally discussed with the city council. Does that seem accurate to you, that it was maybe about 88 or not 89, in which there was a conversation about potentially obtaining a conditional use permit for the restaurant?
No, there was.
Do you recall if it was, was in the late 80s, is when, when you first engaged the council about a restaurant or tavern at that location?
No, that was 2012.
2012?
And that's when, it was right around 2012, that, you know, I'm zoned for it, but I have to get a conditional use for it.
Right, right. So I think we have a couple of complicating factors. I mean, if you need the holding tank as a replacement, you come with some significant restrictions on this, based on city ordinance and, and so forth. If you're looking for a holding tank in order to open a restaurant and a tavern, that's an entirely different conversation that would need to come forward with city staff, and ultimately to, to the city council here for consideration. So what I'm thinking is, if, if that's your intent, sir, to, to engage that conversation about getting the conditional use permit for a tavern or a restaurant in that location, then I would recommend that the city council actually postpone this item, and we engage in further conversation with city staff and you to determine exactly what you'd like to do.
Okay.
Whether or not sewer will be extended there at any time soon, and, you know, ultimately put a package together for plan commission and/or the city council to consider, based upon where those conversations with staff go.
Yeah, I have any?
I would, I would move postponement of resolution R 123 until, time is, is, time until city has had discussions with Mr. Gervasi to determine the, a resolution of the property, certification of the property.
All those in favor of postponing resolution? Any other question, discussion? No? Okay. All those in favor of postponing resolution R dash 100 dash 23, say aye?
Aye.
That one was, okay.
No, postponing is.
Yeah. Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming, sir.
Okay.
I will write down my contact information real quick, so you have that, and we can, we can reach out. Actually, no, you put it in a slip. We'll get ahold of you. I'll get your contact information from there.
All right. Thank you for the time.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so next.
Thank you, Minister Brecklin for clarifying that, clarifying that. Very appropriate. Next, I would move postponement of resolution R 10123, accepting subdivision improvements in the Ochala certified survey map.
Second.
This was, there were still items that weren't completed to the city engineer's satisfaction, and we would postpone this till June 13th. Is that correct, Chad, or Julia?
So all of them in favor of postponing resolution R dash 101 dash 23, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So next.
Next, I'll move approval of resolution R 10423 for the preliminary assessment resolution for Lacy Road water main improvements.
Second.
I don't know who did it.
Give it to Randy.
Over you on top of each other here?
Public Works approved.
Did finance committee approve?
Finance approved.
Okay, so what is this, David?
So we'll be putting in water main on, on Lacy Road from Rockridge Trail to Crescent Crossing. The park that's within the TED will be paid for by the TED. The property outside it will still be paid 30% by the, by the TED, and it's to serve existing properties and, and future, future development. This is the preliminary resolution, assessment resolution, to see what these costs would be. This is not, it would be our intent to, also, this would assist with looping of water main and, and fire protection issues we have in the, in the area. But this does not, it's preliminary assessment. We anticipate moving ahead with this, but this does not compel us, the prices, you know, out of, you know, out of bounds.
Any questions? No? Okay. All those in favor of resolution R dash 104 dash 23, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So, thank you, David. Next, we move to park commission.
I just have two things. One, we, we approved the, in the framework of South Stoner Prairie Park. There was additional discussion on that about the, the prairie, and some accommodations have been, have been made, and I believe we have a, a plan to move forward with that, with that design now. And that's been a long, as you know, as a mayor, that's been a long discussion on that, working through, and I think we have a, I think we have a good plan moving forward. And second, we heard from any of you that ride the Capital City Trail, between the tunnel and where the, the path comes down from the Cannonball Trail, there's a section, there's an outlot, outlot that's owned by the city. It was unbuildable in a, in a group, a group of volunteers to, to honor a deceased city member, Kyle.
Steger.
Steger, yes, thank you, thank you. Have been working to, they've been clearing it, and they would, it's their intention to, to make a small, you know, small little park along the, the bike trail there. And we heard from them, you know, the intent would be, this would be funded by, by volunteers, by donations, you know, they're not asking the city parks, you know, for, for investment in this. And when you go by there, you know, I think it would be a nice, a nice addition. But they presented it to us, and it will be coming before other, other committees here as they move forward with the plan. And that's all I had on parks.
Okay, thank you. Any question for, no? Okay. So next, we move to library board. Oh, Jim, it's no, so next, we move to commission of aging well. Jay?
On behalf of the commission on aging well, I would move approval of resolution R 9423, authorizing approval of the senior center patio installation bid.
Second the motion.
So did the commission of aging approve?
We did.
Public Works?
Public Works approved.
Finance?
Finance approved.
Okay, I want to clarify that we need two thirds of the entire council to vote. So, okay, so we need the six, we are six, so we need all of you, okay? So, I don't know, Jill, do you want to talk about the patio?
I can briefly talk about it. We've talked about a patio for many years, and I think after COVID, it became more apparent that it would be a great thing to have outside the entrance of the senior center. And of course, it's, it's really for the whole community to use, anyone that comes in the building. So after a lot of discussion and some planning, we kicked off a fundraiser in September through December, and fundraised just over $50,000. And thanks to the Pittsburgh Senior Center friends, we then hired architecture to do a rendering of the patio, something that could really give us an idea of what it was gonna cost. And we figured 60, $70,000 when we started. As you can see, the patio came in at 93. So with some of our legacy funds, as well as we had closed the fundraising in December, thinking we were successful, we reopened it. So now we're just under 70,000 in fundraising. I'm proud to say that 14,500 came from businesses, with the $10,000 donation from Kaiser Ford Foundation. But the rest of the donations came from Pittsburgh Senior Center participants, people that just wanted to see the patio be built. So I feel pretty proud about that. The community really got behind it. So luckily, the senior center has been blessed with a lot of donations over the years. We established a very formal legacy fund back in 2018, and since then have been able to accept donations that are specifically for the senior center. And so with that funding, I can, with this approval, transfer that money from the legacy fund to the patio fund, and hopefully move forward after an approval tonight.
Question? Comment? Are you ready? Okay, David?
We had a, you know, a single, a single bid.
Yeah.
And it's just, I, I think it's a factor of, it's a smaller project, a municipal, and these contractors are busy. You know, we, we had discussion, why weren't there more landscaping companies doing it? And it's, it's mostly a concrete, you know, concrete project. So we, we would prefer to see more bids, but that's, you know, we have, we have one that's within reason.
Okay, all those in favor?
Roll call requested.
Roll call? Okay, roll call.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhurt?
Aye.
Alder Herps?
Aye.
Alder Jutser?
Aye.
Alder Malinato is absent. Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wielder is absent. You have a six vote.
So we have six votes, so we approve it, okay? Thank you. So, thank you, Jill. Okay.
Thank you.
So next, we move to RCC, Gabriella.
Yeah, I just wanted to give information about the two events. So the one that's upcoming is the, is the E-Bike For You event. It's gonna be on June 8th, which is the Thursday afternoon or evening, 6:30 to 7:30 PM at the McKee Farms Park Shelter. And they're gonna have Will and Sprocket there, and then also the Cargo Bike Shop. You can actually try out electric bikes and see if it would be a good fit for you. And there's gonna be giveaway prizes, and the RCC always does a pretty good job with those giveaway prizes, so that'll be a nice fun bonus. So come check out that event. Back on May 18th, we had the PFAS and our water quality event, and I believe that, in fact, you've TV is eventually going to post that on the, on YouTube, which is great, so I can send that around once that posts. But it was a great hour and a half event. We had a speaker talking about like the hydrogeology of the area and water quality because of that and the, the design of our wells even. We had somebody talking about like the health of PFAS in our, in our water and what, what that currently looks like. And then, you know, some information from the DNR about PFAS in the water. And then also Joe Povemacher was there to talk about the fire department response. The bottom line is that we have done testing in our wells and there is no PFAS at all. There are two, I believe, two or three main types of ones that are the most concerning and there's none in any of our wells and they are regularly tested. So people can feel good about that. For people that are on well water, we had a couple residents there that were concerned and then had done testing on their own wells. And we, it did come to light that, that DNR actually has a grant program right now for if people have problematic levels of PFAS in their well, for whatever reason, they can apply for money to replace the well. I think it's up to $16,000 to replace their well or to put in some sort of like filter, filtration system to fix that issue. And that's going to be good through the end of 2024 because it's coming from ARPA funds. So if people have tested their water and it's at a concerning level or they're really interested in testing the water because they're concerned about it, I'd encourage you to reach out to the DNR to talk about that program. And I can certainly help connect anybody, but if anyone in rural areas especially that's dealing with well water, let me know. It's a, it's an interesting program and obviously there's a real specific time horizon on it. So I wanted to, to flag that for, for the alders and for the public, anyone that's watching. And then also Joe, our fire chief, mentioned that they have recently gotten rid of all foams, firefighting foams that include PFAS, not just in Pittsburgh, but also in the region. So we no longer use any sort of foams that include PFAS in them. So, in, all in all, we're in, we're in good shape in that regard. It was a good event and I, I can share that around as soon as, as soon as I have the video. And that's all.
Thank you. Next, Transportation and Transit Commission.
On behalf, on behalf of TTC, I will move for approval, resolution R-81-23, approving the purchase of seven bus shelters from Dual Guard Industries.
Second.
Did TTC, TTC approve?
TTC approved.
Public Works?
Public Works approved.
Finance?
Finance approved.
Okay, thank you. So what is this?
Yes. We had initially wanted to get eight bus shelters, given our, our current situation, especially with the, the new routes taking effect on June 11th. And we received grant money in the amount of $140,000, $140,800, which is to cover up to 80% of the cost. And that leaves a total of $38,085 to be funded by the city. The price of the configured shelters was a bit higher than we hoped for and given our current budget here, we can afford only seven.
Okay. Any question? Okay, Jay.
Yeah, so it looks like these are going to cost about $25,000 each. Does that include installation? Or are we doing that internally?
I, I didn't see a line item for installation in the, in the documentation here. So I think that is something that our Public Works crew is going to take care of. If, yeah, we don't have Tim on the line here, but I'm seeing a subtotal of $21,231.
I'm not certain either. What I can do is pose the question to Public Works to see what the plan was for installation and report back to the council.
Dave, do you recall?
I, I don't, but they were, Public Works was going to take down the old shelters. You know, we have some that aren't going to be used and that might make up for the, the one we're missing. We, we might be able to re-task one, but, oh, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't recall if, if they were going to install them.
Any other question?
Yeah, the other, the other question I had is, I see they're using 3/8 inch tempered safety glass. I'm not sure how durable 3/8 inch safety glass is. It seems like, I, I mean, for, it seems like for other shelters I've seen, it's, it's usually a half or 5/8. Was there any discussion about that?
We did discuss a few things, like I had asked why the additional one foot wall height, for instance. And as, as Tim looked through the, the bill of materials here, he said basically, these are configured to be identical to the ones that we currently have so that we have one type of shelter to deal with when repairs are needed, et cetera.
I see. So I presume then we haven't had issues with the 3/8 inch safety glass being a problem? Okay.
According to this morning meeting, they mentioned that they are going to replicate what we already have. They're going to be the same. So. Any other question? All those in favor of resolution R-81-23, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So next, Sida. Randy?
We meet Thursday at 7:00 AM. Thursday, the 25th.
7:00 AM?
7:00 AM. You remember those dates.
Randy, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee.
Agen Row. We have not met, so nothing to report.
Bicycle Committee, Joe is not here. EMS Commission, Jim is not here. Healthy Neighborhood Committee.
We have nothing to report. We don't have a meeting until sometime in June, but I don't remember when.
Okay. Housing Advisory Committee, Joe is not here.
That's actually me now.
Oh, I do, oh, sorry.
Yeah, we meet on June 12th, so no report.
Sorry. Landmarks Preservation Commission, Shannon? Okay. Tree Advisory Committee. I think there is a meeting coming, but I don't know. Don't remember. June 8th, okay. Then we don't have any to report for Police Facility Oversight Committee yet. I am correct? Yes. No meeting yet, okay. So next, we are moving to the standard committee reports. Finance Committee, Randy?
All right. Motion for approval of resolution R-92-23, approval for Pittsburgh-Virona Analog Tactical System Upgrade.
Second.
With an amendment.
Oh, really?
Did you have that amendment, Chad?
So I did not have time to drop, draw that up, but basically for the council's consideration, what was amended at Finance, it was discussed that this radio system is serving the city of Pittsburgh, the city of Verona, as well as EPIC Systems, and that the three entities have a cost sharing arrangement for the operation, maintenance, and of course, in this case, the replacement of the existing system that has reached end of life. And we talked in the third whereas clause, if you'll take a look at the resolution, that it may not have been abundantly clear that there are three entities that participate in the system and when you look at, will be split and billed to Verona Fire and EPIC Systems, that it may imply that there is only the two that will be splitting the cost. Obviously, as the mayor just commented, that might be advantageous for the city of Pittsburgh, but not truly how this is shaking out. So you will see in the supporting documents, it does break down the cost between the three entities, where Pittsburgh's share of the project is $146,000 and change. Verona's share is 80, just shy of $83,000 and EPIC's is just over $89,000. So that whereas clause will, will be updated to reflect that the three entities participate in this or have an agreement with this system and that it will be billed in accordance with the supporting documentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comment, question?
Yeah, I just wanted to also make, make clear that some of the supporting documentation indicates this equipment is no longer manufactured and is no longer supported, which I think is quite important. It's, you know, the, the resolution itself only manages the, the damage due to the flooding, but it sounds like we needed this equipment replaced regardless.
Okay. Joe? Chief?
Yeah, the, the damage expedited the replacement. We would have been able to, to operate with the equipment had all the components been working, even outside of it being supported. So because of the fact that there was damage to the system, we couldn't replace those components, which is why the replacement was expedited and why we moved it up on the CIP.
Thank you, Chief. Any other comment? Gabriela?
I just wanted to confirm with Randy that this was moved as approved by Finance.
That's correct. I was going to wait for all discussion to finish, but thank you for bringing that.
Okay.
Another important thing to, to note is we actually addressed the overall operation of this system and actually reduced the amount of components that would have needed to be replaced to more closely resemble how we're using the equipment between the three organizations. Three municipalities, two municipalities and private entity.
Okay. Any other comment? Okay, Bill?
Yeah, so it said that there was flooding at a location which damaged the equipment. How do we, or what steps are we taking to make sure that that never happens in the future?
So the, what we are attempting to do is to address that through Verona. That component of the system happened, that damage happened in Verona. They are maintaining their radio equipment under the, the water tower. It's where they keep it. They do have sensors now in place to be able to identify when there's water in that area. But from a municipality, they are ultimately responsible for the equipment that exists within their site. So hopefully they're doing it to minimize the, the cost associated with what they need to, well, to, to better establish the, the control mechanism so that they can reduce the, the overall liability.
I, I have a question. Do we insure this type of equipment? They don't have insurance. Why we are?
So, I, I can speak to Pittsburgh and if this happened in Pittsburgh, we would have, we would have submitted a claim.
Yeah.
I know that something was done in Pittsburgh or in Verona to the point where they submitted something and I don't know if it was approved or not. I attempted to get that in writing. I shared that as, as part of some of the explanation, but because of the fact that that's outside of the operation of the Pittsburgh Fire Department, it was difficult to get that information. I can tell you what happens in Pittsburgh and we would have submitted a claim.
Can we move this equipment to here, to Pittsburgh?
No, because it's, it's part of a repeater system and it's how the radio signals happen to be able to boost that signal. It's why these, these repeaters are, this, these components of the radio system are kept in Verona and on EPIC to extend our reach.
Okay. Any other question? Okay. All those in favor of this resolution as amended in Finance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. So we have another one, Randy?
Yes. Motion to approve resolution R-93-23, approval for refurbishment, refurbishment of fire department utility vehicle.
Second.
And Finance, Finance approved.
Okay. And for this one, we need to, also two thirds of the vote, okay? So. Okay, Randy?
Joe, Chief Paul Povemacher, you're going to speak to this item as well since you're online?
Yeah, absolutely. So if you'll recall, this is the vehicle that we were able to get at a significant reduction in cost as compared to what we were expecting the replacement to be. This is a used vehicle. And then in order to bring it up to our specification with lighting, with paint and with some of the, the features associated with how the, the compartments are going to be laid out, there's some refurbishment costs. We had two different options. We picked the, the lesser of the two options because of the fact that not only did it give us a better price, but it gave us a better turnaround. So we're still well underneath the $500,000 that was budgeted for this project and we'd like to, to move forward. And it, $500,000 was budgeted for this project before we knew of the cost increases that were going to happen with emissions and with just the things that we're seeing in the supply chain. So that $500,000 was likely to go up to about $700,000 after the increases were made. So we're, we're doing very well in taking advantage of this platform.
Okay. Any other question for the chief? Bill?
Am I reading this right? We, we spent $87,000 and we're paying twice that for the refurbishment of it?
Yeah, we paid $80,000 for a vehicle that's worth $200,000. So what we did is we tried to get in front of it. We got it for as low of a bid that we could. The vehicle's worth much more than $80,000. We were lucky.
Okay. And it doesn't scare you that it's costing $170,000 to refurbish it?
Well, absolutely not, because this was going to be a $500,000, well, let me take that back, because it's going to be a $700,000 project. So yeah, absolutely, this is the right way to go. It's got very low miles. It's a very clean machine. I, I would invite you to come and take a look at it, but it's in really good condition and it's well worth our investment.
Any other comment, question? Jay?
Joe, what is a cascade bottle?
Cascade bottle is for the SEBA. We have a, we are able to reservice our breathing air on site and those are the bottles that are utilized to hold the pressurized air in order to reserve, reservice bottles that are empty.
Any other comment? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, yes, true. Roll call.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herps?
Aye.
Alder Jetzer?
Aye.
Alder Malo is absent. Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler is absent. You have six.
Okay, we approve it. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
So Randy, you have another one?
Yes. Motion to approve resolution R-99-23, MOU, memo, memo of understanding between the city and IAFF on the payment of the uniform allowance and how the allowance is paid out to an employee.
Second.
And the Finance Committee approved. Joe, Chief Paul Povemacher, you're speaking to this item as well?
I can speak to it briefly and then I'm sure the city administrator can bring you up to speed, but this basically allows the firefighters to be reimbursed similarly to the way that the police department is reimbursed for their uniform allowance.
It's going to separate check.
Two separate checks.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comment? All those in favor? Oh, yeah.
Just one. What's the current reimbursement amount?
The amount doesn't change, it's just the process in which they're being compensated for it.
All those, oh, Bill, okay.
Yeah, in the, in the memorandum itself, it, it leads with, "In 2022, the city shall issue a check." Is that a typo or is this some, why does it say 2022?
No, that's, we started in 2022 issuing a check and I think originally it was added to their existing paycheck and the police union in their contract, this uniform allowance and maintenance payment is made in a separate paycheck, twice per year, and the fire department union requested the same process for consistency. So we're merely matching the process that we've, we've been utilizing with the police department at the fire department's request.
Any other comment?
If I, if I make a, at the firefighter's request and then we, we agree with it.
Thank you, Joe. I appreciate the clarification.
Okay. All those in favor of resolution R-99-23, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So next, we move to personal committee.
We met on May 10th to do quite a few things. We did some classification title updates. So the commercial appraiser is now the deputy city assessor. The accounting manager is now the accounting manager slash treasurer. The finance director is now the finance director slash comptroller. If you'll recall, we approved an ordinance change recently where the, we moved the comptroller responsibilities from the administrator to the finance director. responsibilities from the administrator to the finance director. So that's kind of aligning that change. And then importantly, we changed the project engineer to a new designation of senior project engineer. And the difference between those two classifications is going to be that the senior project engineers have a PE license, a professional engineering license, and we're going to make that consistent across all of the engineers within public work. So if they have a professional engineer's license, they have the title of senior project engineer. And then the next thing we did was edit a brand-new classification called project engineer without a professional engineer license. So the main difference is that this person will have no supervisory duties, so they can't supervise anyone else, like an intern even, and they will be supervised by a senior project engineer. But it's an experiment, and hopefully, we can hire somebody that's kind of fresh out of college that might not have that license yet, and we can train them in-house to how we do, you know, our senior project engineers can take that on. And we talked to Tim about, you know, did they feel like they had the capacity to take on that additional sort of training? And he said it was, yes, they had a long discussion about that. They think they can, and they think it's worth making this arrangement so that we have a chance to hire some new people, because it's been so difficult to hire, to be fully staffed in the engineering. So yeah, so that's an exciting thing. Hopefully, we can maybe get some, a new hire based on that. We also approved the commercial driver's license training policy and procedures so that we can clarify how we reimburse, or actually, we don't reimburse. We pay $5,000 for someone that wants to go through the CDL training and just kind of specifying what the requirements are in terms of how that works in order to, they have to work for three years after passing the test. If they don't pass the test, they have to reimburse the city items like that. But the goal was to make sure that we can pay for that $5,000 fee upfront, because it's so high that it might, reimbursing might not be possible. Someone might not be able to pay $5,000 out of pocket, and we do want people to pursue that if they're interested. So we updated that. We also added the classification and the position description for the deputy city administrator, which we approved in the budget last year. And so that's been approved, but we finally have the classification. And we waited specifically so that Baker Tilly could do some of their staff analysis and decide whether or not that that position was justified based on the staffing study, and they did think that it was an important position. So that, I believe, is already posted and is out for hire. And then the last thing, and you got an email, I believe, on the next day, May 11-ish, from Sarah Olson about the Baker Tilly study. They did their first, the first phase is done, where they did all that interviews with the staff and the analysis of what exists. And they had three initial observations, which I can read now. The first is that "The city has grown, yet a township mentality remained, straining human capital, financial and operational resources, requiring everyone to do more with less while service demands continue to rise." The second observation was "Investing in the right technologies and systems can lead to the reduction of manual, duplicative, and extraneous activities, straining those already wearing too many hats." And the third observation was "Investing in real solutions for overcoming the local, regional, state, and national trends in recruitment and retention, with special attention paid to public safety, will be key to the city's future." So those are the three general studies, and then they're going to be doing a lot of benchmarking against other peers, follow-up meetings potentially, and then additional data, and they will create a draft report by June 14th, is what they originally said, final report on July 5th, and they will be presenting at the Personnel Committee meeting on July 12th. So, and I'd encourage as many of you that are interested in kind of coming and see that, the whole idea behind having this done at this point in time is so that it can inform the 2024 budget process. So yeah, July 12, 2023 is going to be a Wednesday. That's our Personnel Committee meeting, so feel free to join us, and I can send out an email in advance reminding you of that. That is all.
Okay, thank you. So next, public safety and human services.
So we had two operators licenses, or provisional, we approved tonight. There's a large uptick, as you expect, in graduation and birthday parties. Good amount coming down, coming down the pipe. And I just wanted to highlight one event. The concerts in the park at McKee are on again, and the one on the 19th with the live music, that'll be a 40th, city 40th anniversary party on that one, on July 19th. That's all I had.
Thank you. So then next, we move to new business, and we have a direct referral. So Randy?
Yes, direct referral. Motion to approve Resolution R-112-23, supporting a joint application for US DOT charging and fueling infrastructure discretionary grant program.
Second.
Okay, and this one, we also will need two-thirds of the vote. And we have Phil, you want Phil to talk about that?
Yeah, no, he's welcome to, and then Finance.
Approved.
Approved, yes.
Phil?
Sure. Hi, thanks. Yeah, so this is a bit of a preemptive grant approval. So what's happening here is because of the bipartisan infrastructure law, there's some funding that the US DOT Department of Transportation has allocated to expand the nation's electric vehicle and alternative fuel infrastructure. Wisconsin, like every other state, has designated alternative fuel corridors, and Dane County and several of the municipalities, universities, some of the utilities and other entities are working together to propose a grant for some of this DOT funding that would help us to expand charging in Dane County. Dane County has, I believe the figure is 20% of the state's electric vehicles and is, I think, lagging behind a little bit in terms of matching that with charging infrastructure. So we have a planning team that's working on a grant for this. Each of the partners on the leadership team was asked to submit a letter of commitment that essentially says, yes, we will participate in this leadership process for the next year, two years, if we end up receiving the grant and need to actually move forward with identifying specific priority locations. Part of that letter of commitment also says that if needed, this is an 80% grant, and so it would be a 20% match required. That could come from hosts to be identified later. It could also come from the municipality. And so this is essentially saying, if needed, the city of Pittsburgh then would provide that 20% match. But the most, the most tangible, urgent, I guess, outcome of this is signing the letter of commitment to, to commit to being part of this planning process. And so we're looking at expanding charging stations, as I mentioned, along these alternative fuel corridors. That includes Verona Road and the Belt Line, where they're adjacent to the city of Pittsburgh. We also would look at areas that have been underserved for various reasons, so lower-income communities, multifamily housing, where there are questions about funding and about ownership and maintenance. We'd be looking at rural areas where there's a lower likelihood that private entities would be funding charging infrastructure, so just really looking to expand this out and, and get our EV charging network a little bit more, more equitably spread around the county.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? David, and then Bill?
Here's my comment. You know, I'm not against electric cars, but the US government has no money. You know, the trillion-dollar deficit. And while I appreciate the large number of electric vehicles that our residents have in the city, most of them are higher-income earners, and they charge them at home. So I, I feel this is a folly.
Bill?
Yeah, so who would actually own and operate these things? If, like, if the city pays for it, does that mean that we would own and operate? And who would be the private entities? And why would there, why would a private entity, well, I guess, the funds are available to anyone, not just municipalities?
The funds are available to municipalities, tribal governments, to, there's a, there's a certain set of institutions. I don't believe that private entities are on the list. I'd have to go back and look. I'm not fully up to speed on the eligible entities. The ownership would be determined, so the process would be to create a set of priorities. Once we have priorities, once we have a preferred vendor for the electric vehicle charging stations, once we've got agreements with our utilities about how, how the charging and the electric service would be provided, then we would submit an RFP and ask interested potential hosts to submit proposals included in agreements, included in the proposals, and then ultimately agreements that would be signed, would be an understanding about matching that 20% of the cost, and then a, a commitment for maintenance for a certain period of time, just to make sure that these are going to be, they're not going to be set in place and then ignored, that they will be maintained and, and kept functional. They're meant to be publicly accessible charging stations. So if, you know, if a nonprofit, if it, you know, a church or other nonprofit, if a private business, if a multifamily property owner, if the government, if Pittsburgh wanted to be a host, then we would respond to that RFP. And that would be once we know where the gaps are in the network and where the priority locations are. I'll just say, in, with respect to the first comment, the money is there for this grant from the bipartisan infrastructure law. It will be spent. Whether, whether Dane County is on the receiving end of that or not depends on the success of our grant. But that, that money is going to be spent on the EV infrastructure. So if we determine there are gaps in Dane County, we feel it'd be advantageous for us to look to get that 80% assistance with this money. And there also, I believe, the bipartisan infrastructure law, I don't remember, yeah, it was the BIL that also included funding to give tax rebates to individuals at various income levels for purchasing electric vehicles. So the hope is that over the coming years, the ownership of EVs is going to expand to a larger segment of the population as well.
I will, I will add, what we're really looking for this evening is, is this grant had a quick turnaround, if I recall correctly, right? Phil, I think they needed an answer if Pittsburgh wanted to be part of the planning leadership team and really have a seat at the table as this grant application and potential citing of EV charging infrastructure, you know, have, have extensive input in, in on that if the county were to receive this grant. And with that in mind and the tight turnaround here, we did feel with a letter of commitment being necessary that we had to identify in that letter that, you know, funding had been obligated in the event we do need funding for that 20% match. This $8,000 would be a maximum expenditure based upon our estimates. Phil was looking at rough, you know, kind of calculations as it relates to the cost of a charging station, and our share would probably be somewhere around $500 per actual station, based upon what, what Phil was able to glean at this point in time. Of course, things, things could, could change as we learn more, but the $8,000 is coming from the TID closure, Harper-Tid Closure Investment Plan. So that's, that's the source of the funding. And because of the fact that it is a budget amendment, that's why it requires the two-thirds vote, which of course, tonight is, and there's no margin there, clearly.
The other thing that I want to mention is that if we are, electric cars are coming, you know, I think as a city, we need to be prepared how to absorb and how to provide those EV chargers to our resident, and I think this is, I think this is a great step up, you know, to work with Dane County and all the others, organization that they are putting together this grant, and I think this is a good thing for the city, and I hope that we can, you know, get the support from all of you. Any other comment? Jay?
Yeah, I, I think this is an important thing to get involved with. Electric cars are becoming more and more prevalent in this area, and, well, they probably are getting more and more prevalent everywhere. But, you know, if we're going to be serious about being a partner with our fellow municipalities, this is an excellent way to do so. Now, it may be that the grant funding doesn't come. Maybe, maybe Dave's right, and it's a folly, but maybe Dave's not right, and it does actually happen. If that's the case, then I would hate to be the, the people out here on an island who are not participating while we are out here, you know, while we're out here doing other things to promote more dense urban development and not provide this type of infrastructure. So I think this is an important part of city infrastructure, that we should be doing what we can to try to get additional funding. And, you know, if the federal government's going to spend the money, I'd rather they spend it here than somewhere else.
Any comment, Gabriel?
Yeah, Dave, I was just, wanted to clarify it. Do you, are you thinking you're going to vote no, or you're just, are you unhappy with it?
I, I'm sorry, Gabrielle, you know, the federal government is spending money they don't have. They're borrowing money to, to do this. I'm not against electric cars. I'm very much in favor, but I think it's a private, it's a private decision and a private, I don't, I don't want us in the, in the middle of it. People can make their own decisions and, you know, apartments and things like that that don't have garages, those cars don't fare very well sitting outside, and most time, the apartments that we have, people aren't going to be able to afford them, I'm sorry. You know, it's just, you know, not everyone can afford that Audi, that Audi electric car that I see driving around the city.
But David, David, this is, this is, we want to apply to the grant. Nothing is committed. We want to be there, working with the other municipality to be part, because if we start saying no to all of this, we are not going to get invited in the future to participate in other grant proposals. So, and this is, you know, this is, is, is to approve the letter and some matching fund that they can come if we get the grant. So nothing is, nothing is like 100% confirmed, but we need to, if we want to be part of this grant, you know, it's me to sign the letter and say, yeah, we, we have $8,000 if this grant is approved to work on this. And I think this is a great, as Jay mentioned, this is a great infrastructure for the city. So I think, you know, I would like you, for you to, you know, to see this with another sense, on other lenses, you know what I mean?
Well, we're 31 trillion in debt, and we keep adding. I'm sorry, you know, it just doesn't, if we get a balanced budget, I'm all for it, you know? You'll have my vote if the federal government, but spending money we don't have, I just...
Is there, is there a way to sign onto the letter without obligating the funds, thus, like negating the two-thirds vote requirement? Or does it, we have to transfer the funds in order to even sign the letter?
Phil, if I recall correctly, there was an option to do a letter of support as well.
There's an option to do a letter of support.
Clearly wasn't...
To be clear, the, the $8,000, the $8,000 is not committed right now. This is my high-end estimate, assuming a certain number of stations. That is not a guarantee. The most important part of the letter of commitment is that we're signing on to be part of the planning and leadership team for this. We could sign on as a letter of support, and in that case, we're not at the table. We're not part of the discussions. This would still move forward. Dane County will still plan on the EV charging infrastructure. They'll work with Madison, with Middleton, with Sun Prairie, and not with Pittsburgh. If we, I mean, you know, we, we can have a voice, but not to the same capacity. If we sent a letter of support, we're saying, we agree that everyone else should work on this. If we sent a letter of commitment, we're saying, we want to be part of this leadership team, understanding it goes forward either way without us. But the letter of commitment simply allows us to have a more prominent seat at the table, and given that these alternative fuel corridors have already been approved for the state of Wisconsin, and they pass through and adjacent to Pittsburgh, I, I will, I will say, I think it is important for us to be at that table in terms of what's happening. You know, the last year, EVs were 14% of the market share. This year, they're expected to hit 18. It's only a few years before they're 25, 30% of the market. And it, yeah, this is an opportunity for us to be a, a part of the advanced planning team.
Is it possible to postpone this till the following council meeting, when we have the full council present?
The grant, the grant needs to be submitted by the, the joint group on June 13th, which I believe is the day of the next council meeting, so it will be submitted before the council meet next, which is why I look, why this is on the agenda as a direct referral, was because we didn't really have much of a turnaround time.
Yeah, so the reason I, why I just, I mean, I, obviously, there's, this will fail if we vote on it, so I just, I would hate for us to be completely eliminate the opportunity to do this without the full council having a chance to weigh in, obviously not knowing how anyone would vote if they were here. But is it possible to amend it so that it's just a letter of support and not a...
Yeah, we can send the letter.
I don't know.
Well, I think, as Phil mentioned, that if it's a letter of support, which certainly could be a consideration by the council, that may remove our seat at the table in being part of the planning process of where these chargers would go if the grant is awarded to Dane County. And I think that's, that's where, really where, it would be my suspicion, Phil, and you can weigh in on this, that, you know, if we were to receive council support that's needed to move forward with this tonight, it really allows us to be at the table, part of the planning process, and ultimately, I would suspect that these chargers would be located... I would suspect that these chargers would be located on public property more than likely. And there will likely need to have some measure of one or more components of any placement of these, whether it's to purchase them or, or place them or otherwise, that will come back before this body, which could provide an additional opportunity for, for folks to, to weigh in on, on this sort of, uh, matter. But, um, it is seemingly critically important if we want a seat at the table as a municipality, um, that we, that we sign on to that now in order to get that seat. And, uh, we can discuss it further as sites are identified. Does that seem reasonable with your understanding of the, the process, Phil?
It does, thanks.
Uh, Jay?
If we, uh, if we just pass the resolution as a resolution of support, um, and then maybe on the 13th, uh, passed an additional resolution that added this back, I mean, I, I, I don't understand why this is controversial. I understand Dave doesn't wanna spend any money, but the bottom line is, the money's going to be spent. And we can, we can sit here and, and try to attack the federal government, um, on how it spends money in a, in a way that it's been spending, spending money for, well, over the last half century. But the bottom line is, the money's going to be spent. It's going to be borrowed and spent. And, um, whether it's spent here or not is another question, and whether we have a role in how, uh, this gets planned out i- is also at stake here. Um, I mean, it's really a question of whether we, as the city of Fitchburg, want to, want to have a leadership role in how this gets done, or whether we want to just be, uh, the ones who are either drug along or just not even part of the equation. So I, my preference, when you have an opportunity to be a leader, is to always be the leader. Because then you can set policy, then you can make, uh, then you can at least have the input to be able to make, uh, decisions about how things are done. Uh, so I, I really hope, Dave, that you will change your mind and vote in favor of this, but, um, I suspect that's not going to happen tonight. So, having said that, uh, Madam Mayor, I would move to remove the last be it further resolved clause from this resolution.
Second.
So we are removing, the city will be responsible for the 20% match?
Yes.
So it means that this one is gonna be a letter of support, that's it?
That's it.
Not sit at the table?
Uh, uh, if I may, just one more time, I will.
Can we submit this on June 13th, the last day?
We need to see if there's gonna be a second for that. Oh, you did.
I said second.
I, I will also, uh, reach back out to Kathy Coons, who's leading this effort from the Dane County Office of Energy and Climate Change, and, um, yeah, discuss this and just see, um, if there are other options in between these two.
Yeah, the other option that we can do is to call to a special council meeting to have the whole council to, to vote for this before the June 13th meeting. I can, I can bring the council if, you know, some of you agree with this. I, I think, I think for me, David, this is a very important, um, uh, you know, resolution, because if we want to be the city that, you know, um, we see that we want to be sustainable, we want to, you know, use, um, renewable, we want to start using electric vehicle for our fleet, you know, so how we are not gonna be on the table, you know, is only, you know what I mean? So that one, I, I cannot understand why. This is, 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 is a grant. We don't know even if we are gonna get it, you know what I mean? So, so, but the idea is that as a city, we should be there with, with the other municipality working, because if we start retrieving ourselves for all of this in, they are not gonna invite us to be on the table in the next round. And this is my concern. Um, so, uh, I, I will ask you, Dave, to reconsider this.
I don't, I don't think anyone's, um, you know, the, vote is down, the, the, people's choice of getting electric vehicles in Fitchburg. This is a private matter. I don't, well, you know, people wanna get electric cars, charge them at home. I don't, I don't care if the people going down to Dodgeville, you know, wanna stop here and charge their vehicles. I, it's a private, you know, the, the use of electric car or not is a, is a personal decision and, and, I say, we're, we're, we're spending money we don't, we don't have, and this isn't, this isn't a, a priority. People can get the electric cars if they want and, and I, I, soon we, we stay out of it. I, you know, I know a little bit about this. I know what these things cost, the, the electric infrastructure for them. You know, this is what I do for a living, you know, that, that, uh, you know, there's a lot more costs that I don't think anyone sees. And the other thing I would add is, is private businesses are gonna put these in if there's the demand. IV has, IV has them. Um, you know, you're gonna, the private businesses will, I'd rather, I'd rather they, they take up the, the charge instead of us getting in the middle of it. We got enough, we got enough, you know, going on, trying to keep our streets paved and our garbage picked up, you know? Let's stay, let's stay focused on what we do well.
But this is another infrastructure amenity that we can provide, you know, planning for the future, because electric cars are gonna be the future, you know, you know? So how we prepare our city to be part of that revolution, you know what I mean?
I, I understand. It's not, you know, it's not my fault the other alders didn't, didn't come, you know? I'm sorry, Jim is sick. I, I have a very high attendance rate, you know? I should have the right to my vote without so much scrutiny, you know? I, I vote, I vote with you on 90% of the time, you know, so.
She said she, she'd like to vote.
So.
Call the question.
So what is it in, on the?
So on the table you have the removal of the last whereas clause.
But my other option is to call for another meeting.
That's what I would encourage you to do, Madam Mayor.
I can call to a special council meeting, uh, for next week. Can you give me your opinion?
So I think what you'd wanna do is have a motion to postpone, then, if that's what your intent is.
Yeah, so, yes. So a motion to postpone, um.
Although what you need to do is, we need to act on the motion that was put on with the whereas clause removal. I don't know if Jay wants to.
Well, a, a motion to postpone is a primary motion, so.
Okay.
That supersedes anything else on the table.
Okay.
So I, so I, I move, uh, to postpone this, um, resolution to.
Well, you, you can't make a motion.
Well, so we can consider it. I'll move to postpone this to a, to a special council meeting.
Second.
All those in favor of postponing this?
We better get a roll call on that.
Aye.
Roll call? Okay, roll call. For when we are postponing, we need to set up a date.
You could, yeah, a later date.
Yeah, the date called by the mayor, yeah. So clarification, this is a motion to postpone this resolution to a later date.
Okay.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jutser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado is absent. Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler is absent. You have five to one.
Okay, so the motion carries to postpone. Thank you very much. Uh, so next, we move to, um, 10B, action on claim, Brian Burt, so, um, chat.
Yes, so, uh, Mr. Burt submitted a claim for damage to a tire and wheel on his vehicle. He had been driving, uh, on Fish Hatchery Road, uh, indicated in his claim with the city that he noticed vehicles ahead of him swerving, uh, as they neared the intersection with Nobel Drive. Uh, he ultimately, as he, uh, entered that intersection at Nobel and Fish Hatchery Road, struck some construction debris that was within the roadway, uh, causing damage to his, uh, tire and rim to the tune of approximately $287, I believe. Uh, he, uh, filed a claim with the city, uh, requesting reimbursement for his damaged tire and rim. Uh, we shared that claim with our city's insurance company. Obviously, it is clearly under our deductible, but as we would typically do, we would seek an opinion as to whether or not we should pay this through our insurance, uh, seek a, an opinion from our insurance company as to whether or not we should pay this. And after they took a look at this, uh, as you may expect, they recommended that this claim be denied by the city. So tonight, uh, we are seeking, uh, a motion to deny this claim, and if anyone has, uh, any desire to discuss this further, we would need to postpone and do a closed session, uh, at a future date.
I would move that we deny this claim.
Second.
All those in favor of denying this claim, say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. So next, um, mayor's report. Uh, so we, I continue working with, um, city staff, especially with, uh, Chad and Misty on the CAP. Um, we had to finalize it in the next week. Um, also want to share with you that I went to, um, I was invited to go to, um, a training for first-time mayors, uh, done by the Mayor's Innovation, uh, Project, that is a center that is, uh, in UW. Uh, so I had the opportunity last week, um, to go to this training and, uh, for two days, um, share, uh, you know, have some training about how to be a mayor for the first time, challenging, you know, some specific training about equitable leadership and priority, um, you know, uh, some, uh, we received some coaching skill. And it was a cohort of almost 14 mayors from different parts of the country, and it was, um, it was free, David, okay? The city didn't pay anything. Um, so, um, so it was a great, uh, training, um, and, um, you know, and a great, uh, also center that we have here in the city of Madison, so, through the university. Um, so the other thing is, um, I want to invite you to this, uh, memorial service on, um, on May 29th. Um, it's a day to remember and honor our veterans, the people that they have followed, um, to protect our freedoms. And it's gonna be, uh, you receive an invite from Lisa today. Um, so, um, it's starting at 12, 12:30, uh, the Gorman Wayside Veteran Memorial Park. So, um, everyone is invited. Um, the other thing, um, um, I want to share with you is that there are some new thing coming in the inclusive playground. We are still meeting. Um, we are, um, I don't know, you have been walking through the McKee Farm Park. Um, we are installing a shade, um, in the inclusive playground and two new shade in the splash pad. Um, so that one I wanna be ready before opening. Um, what else? And that's it for me. So now, um, any question for me? So some of the, now we move to, uh, Alder's, uh, report. So I wanna start with District One.
Um, I wanted to, uh, thank, uh, pass long appreciation to new, uh, building inspection employee, Gabe, for, uh, finally getting, after six months, getting garbage cans moved off the street in, in our, uh, he's, he's made a big difference down there. Um, also wanted to thank the Building Wisconsin for the event held at McKee Farms Park this weekend. Uh, there were, I think, over 5,000 people, many, many kids, a great event, getting, uh, uh, youth involved in building trades. And then, uh, last thing, we had a, a resident from my district, uh, Don Kosterman, uh, he was on a, um, he was on a, on our flight. He came back from, uh, um, Washington DC on Saturday night, and the airport was full of people greeting the 90 veterans, and I'm aware of him, and then another, another one, my neighbor's Pat Newberry, he was on one, um, a month ago. And I wanted to thank the organization that puts that on, and if you get a chance, if you hear about one of these honor flights coming, then I'd encourage you to, to go out to the airport, you know, that night, and it's, it's very inspirational greeting these, these veterans. Thank you.
Uh, District Two?
No report. I was on vacation out of town last week, so I'll let Gabrielle to take it.
Yeah, I also just wanna say Kids Building Wisconsin was a great event. I, I looked it up on their website. They said 8,292 attendees, which is pretty wild. Um, but yeah, it was a really, really cool, active event, and kids were everywhere, and it was a lot of fun, so it's great that we had that in Fitchburg. Uh, second thing, the farmer's market is open, is back up and running. It's been for a few weeks. It's at the Agora Pavilion, Thursdays from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. And also, just small note, COSA Boutique, which is, I, I think maybe one of our only retail stores in the city of Fitchburg, is moving to Verona, which I'm very sad about, but, uh, so that is, they have a moving away sale. Um, and also just wanted to make a note that I think it's rough that we can't attract retail businesses, and when we do, we can't seem to keep them just by the nature of how our city is constricted, so I don't know if there's a way for us to do that, but it's a disappointment to me. Um, I understand why they're leaving, so, uh, but that's disappointing, and I wish that we could, maybe we should continue to think about how we can encourage retail businesses to, to locate themselves in Fitchburg. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, District Three, Jay?
Yeah, um, my residents are continuing to be frustrated with the Sine Road, Lacy Road closure. Uh, but, you know, it's only another month of that, and then we get to move to Sine Road and Cheryl Parkway, so, yay.
Shannon?
No report.
Randy?
Uh, I'd like to give a big shout out to Scott Endel and his, his team that, uh, cut grass. I, during Mother's Day, I was able to, or had the opportunity to take a close friend that's, uh, that has a history with Fitchburg, and I did not know that until fairly recent, and she has a long, uh, lineage to Fitchburg, and, uh, anyway, took her to the cemetery. And, uh, she hadn't been there in 20, 30 years, but she wanted to, uh, pay her respects to her, her grandparents and then her great-grandparents. And, uh, but she was just amazed at how well the cemetery had been kept up. And, um, uh, the last time she was at the cemetery, 20, 30 years ago, she thought it was, needed a lot of work, so. Uh, Scott and his team have done a great job, and, uh, for those that aren't aware of the cemetery, there's some great, uh, history there, um, in the sense of names that built Fitchburg and even current, so. Uh, I'm not sure if that's the place you wanna hang out, but if you, you wanna see, you wanna see history, uh, Fitchburg history, just visit the cemetery, so.
Thank you, Randy. Uh, another thing that I forgot to mention is that, um, on May 25th, uh, there's gonna be a, a police community meeting, um, at 5:30, uh, the Doha, uh, church is located in Southdale, so it would be great if, um, you know, um, you can attend, um, especially the district, the Alder for the district, to introduce yourself to the community, so. Uh, 5:30 this coming, when is, ah, the 23rd, oh, okay. Okay, so, um, any other announcement? If not, not, we move to, uh, our next committee of the whole will be tomorrow. Um, Jay, do you know what is, uh, the topics?
Oh, yeah, we got financial stuff coming out the wazoo. In the chamber.
Okay, thank you. And next common council meeting will be June 13th. I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in fa- favor of adjournings, say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries.